The April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Friendswood or City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commissioners, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later public or later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. A red light will come on when your time has expired. Also, out of respect for those speaking, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions, which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Nobody? Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and mysterious in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in such case, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The minutes from the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting held on Thursday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor. Okay, next on the agenda are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure, all, actually Becky, is, do we still need four, or is it?
Uh, no, just majority.
Okay, I apologize. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure, the action of the commission may be made by an affirmative, affirmative vote of fifty percent of the members present at the meeting. Our first action item is a request for a zone classification change from a single-family residential zoning district to a community shopping center zoning district, CSC, for a six point three nine five one acre tract of land being the remainder of a nineteen acre tract of land being the northwest half of lots two and three Whitney subdivision, according to the map or plat record in plat record five, map number six of the Galveston County map records, and being all of two point zero zero nine acre homestead tract of land describing Galveston County Clerk's file number eight two zero four eight three zero and the Sarah McKissick League, abstract number one fifty-one, located at eight oh one West Parkwood Avenue, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. The public hearing to receive comments both oral and written regarding the proposed zone classification change is now open. Becky, would you have it, would you please provide the staff summary, or Aubrey, sorry?
That's okay. So, as the agenda item indicated, this property is currently zoned, single-family residential. Um, it is a little over six acres, and the request is to change the zoning on the tract to CSC, which is Community Shopping Center. It's, if you, on the current zoning map, the property right next door is Neighborhood Commercial, which is that purply color, and then the blue is CSC, which is basically all four corners at that intersection at five eighteen and five twenty-eight. The, do you have a next screen or slide? Is there another one? Or is that, okay. So, the future land use map identifies this property to be retail. As you all recall, in two thousand and twenty-one, we did a, you know, looked at the city overall and looked at our goals and the Vision two thousand and twenty plan, FM five twenty-eight corridor, and the, we did public hearings, we did outreach that year, and we ended up adopting the updated future land use map, and so that does, this property is one that changed on that map. The notices were sent out, and it meets the minimum lot size requirement. Any, but, there's no plans for development right now, this is just a straight rezoning, so there's no site plans. Whatever development goes there, we'll have to comply with the CSC zoning regulations, as well as the community overlay, overlay district requirements.
Does the applicant or representative of the applicant wish to make any comments on this zone classification change? Please step to the podium and state your name.
I'm Ruth Ann Madison Prince, and I'm gonna read so I stay on track, if that's okay with you. I'm representing the Madison family. My sister and I grew up on this land before Friendswood ever had zoning. It's a very special place to us, with a history of happiness, positivity, and great joy for many people. Our request is to make a straight zone change from single-family to CSC to be in compliance with Friendswood's future land use map that was unanimously approved in two thousand and twenty-one by Planning and Zoning Commissioners and in two city council votes. Changing from residential to commercial zoning on this property aligns with all our city's guiding documents, Friendswood's Economic Development Policy, Vision two thousand and twenty, and the five twenty-eight commercial corridor strategy plan, like Aubrey mentioned. As Friendswood has grown, this property with over five hundred feet of frontage along five twenty-eight is best suited for commercial purposes now. We are not working with any developers, and we have no plans or intentions to partner with any specific buyers in the future. This request comes strictly from our family, with no hidden agendas. We plan to put the property on the market for sale after the zone is changed. We've tried to do everything in our power to be open, honest, and proactive about gathering feedback, input, and ideas from people who would be affected by this change. We mailed information to the entire neighborhood and all the adjacent properties outside Hunter's Creek. We made phone calls and offered to meet in, with, in person with everyone who was interested in sharing their concerns, and one adjacent homeowner did come and meet with us. It was a very productive meeting. We were able to hear from three of the adjacent owners with their concerns directly, two by telephone, and one in person, and they were mostly concerned about visibility of new development, fence lines, trees, and what would go where. The most practical use of the property would place future developments along five twenty-eight, farthest away from the homes. Since the property slopes down toward Chigger Creek, that side is too low for construction, and placing detention by the creek is prohibited. There are significant onsite drainage requirements, so it stands to reason that a dried detention pond would be located along the back of the property, closest to the homes that do not have commercial exposure now. A dry pond prototype was sized for this parcel, and it measured a hundred and sixty-four feet wide, that's coming from the fence line up toward five twenty-eight. This would make an excellent buffer. We'll do our best to work with any future buyers to come up with a plan that includes something beneficial and beautiful for Friendswood, while still keeping the neighbors' desire for peace and privacy and aesthetics factored into decisions. We appreciate your time, and would appreciate your support and your vote in favor of our zone change request.
Okay. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Okay, nobody? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Is this one for this one? Do we have George Cushing?
I'm here. I'm a friend of Ruth Ann's.
If you please, come up to the podium, please. And if you could just state your name, then.
George Cushing.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm a friend of Ruth Ann's, and I have been in the commercial real estate business for a number of years. I really don't have anything to say, I just wanted to get my name in, in case there was a dialogue, and I wanted to speak at that time, but I don't think there's any necessity.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I missed you in the fore part, so. Okay, anybody else? The public hearing for this topic is now closed. The commission will now consider making a recommendation on the requested zone classification change. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, Aubrey, any additional staff comments?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move to the discussion. Mr. Sassen?
Yeah, this, uh, this came up in a slightly different form about three years ago. I, uh, I actually spent three hours of my life yesterday rewatching the Planning and Zoning Meeting from three years ago, as well as the city council meeting. It was eventually tabled by city council and never came back, so it's, it's come back around now. At the time, what I, I indicated was that this is a, this is a property that is, is pretty much unsellable as, as residential. No one wants to live on five twenty-eight, perhaps when it was built, which is probably before the lifetime of many of the people in this room. It was, five twenty-eight was a different situation. Up here, on the dais, we, we have, this is kind of the hardest decision we make, we have to balance conflicting, sometimes adversarial views, where, where the, what's, you have to look at what, what's the needs of the homeowner are, or the, the property owner, versus the impact on the residents or neighbors, versus what the city wants, and also what the general population wants. Now, like I said, the, the property itself is, is, in my view, no one's gonna buy it as a single-family residential. If you look at it on the, on the, on the long-term map, we, we set, we agreed that it was, it should be commercial, and, and that is clearly the best and highest use for the land. Last time, there were many objections from the adjacent homeowners, I suspect they, they may not be here tonight because of your reaching out to them. I'm very pleased that you did that, that makes it easier for everyone. And I agree with your assessment, and by the way, thank you for letting me tromp over your property today and get a, get a feel for it all around. I was worried if somebody there and they had a shotgun or something, I might be in trouble, so I wore my Planning and Zoning hat right on my chest. The property is a beautiful site, unloved for a while, but, but it is, it's, and as you say, the, the obvious way to commercialize this is to put commercial along five twenty-eight, and there are significant drainage requirements, which would require something like what you described, which would leave a significant buffer. And so, we wouldn't see that until we see the site plan, but, but it's the interest of yours, and I understand why, to make this, uh, commercial. The property owners adjacent last time said this would adversely affect them. Clearly, they are better off if you never sell this property or never develop it at all. They have had the benefit of having empty lot next to them. I happen to live in a subdivision that has an empty lot next to me, and I'm, I'd be very pleased if they never build on it, although I think they're talking about it. But it's not my right to stop them, and it, I don't think it's their right to stop you. But, but we have to balance that, but I think you, I think we have some mitigating things here for that. The city, uh, in the past has said we don't have enough commercial. Our ratio of commercial to residential is low by state standards, and so it would benefit the city, from that viewpoint, to have this be commercial. And so, um, my view, trying to balance all of these, sometimes conflicting views, is, I intend to vote for this, like I did last time, and, and support the, the change here. So, good luck.
Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Mann?
Um, I don't know that anything more could be said than everything that you just said. You kind of covered it, so nothing to say.
Dirty trick.
Commissioner Bounce?
Nothing from my end. Thank you.
Okay. Same for me, Commissioner Sassen did a really good job speaking, so, um, I really have nothing else to add to it, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay. All opposed? None? The motion passes.
So, this item will go forward as a recommendation to city council, and their public hearing is the first Monday in May.
Our section, our, our second action item is a request for a zone classification change from a single-family residential zoning district. SFR to a community shopping center for a six point three nine five one acre tract of land being the remainder of a nineteen acre tract of land being the northwest quarter of lots two and three. Just, I'm repeating the same one. I apologize. Yeah.
Yep. Let it be.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's the action item. You're good.
Yeah, so we're, we're here to conduct a public hearing regarding the request for a zone classification change from single-family residential zoning district to downtown district, with a specific use permit to allow NAICS code eight one three one, religious organizations, and NAICS code six twenty-four, social assistance, for six point zero five five one acres of, out of lots one, two, four, and eight, block twelve, Friendswood, according to plat therefore as filed in plat book seven, page twenty-one, Galveston County map records, located, located at five oh two South Friendswood Drive, and one oh seven, West Spreading Oaks, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Okay. Aubrey, would you like to provide a staff summary?
Yes, sir. So, this is the Friends Church property, and it's located on five eighteen. This is kind of, it's more of a cleanup item. They came in, actually, probably needing some building permits, and we brought it to their attention that their zoning was still a single-family residential. The, the bigger issue is that there's a specific use permit labeled on the zoning map, but there's never, we've never been able to locate an ordinance to back that up. I, some of you may remember, a few years back, the church at one oh four Whispering Pines had an SUP on it, and they ended up bringing us a letter from the city that was mailed to all the churches, saying that SUPs were gonna be applied to all the churches in the city. We don't know if that was, like, just never followed through, but the, the zoning map was labeled with SUPs on all the churches, but there's no ordinances to back up each individual one as required by law. So, this is a cleanup item to correct that SUP and actually formalize it for religious organizations. No changes are being made to the site, and no exterior changes are being made to any of the buildings. The social assistance aspect is, because the church is locate, or is participating in a family promise program, and so, that, they're wanting to utilize one of their, like, repurpose one of their buildings. They may have to, like, install fire sprinkler systems and things like that, but they will meet the requirements for people to come occupy that building. But like I said, we just needed to formalize and clean up their zoning in order to issue permits and all be on the same page.
Okay.
And I don't think there's, nobody from the church was able to attend tonight, so.
That said, does the applicant or representative of the applicant wish to make any comments? None? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? All right, the public hearing for this topic is now closed, the commission will now consider making a recommendation on the requested zone classification change. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, any additional staff comments on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Discussion will start with Commissioner Mann.
I think this is pretty straightforward. Like you said, it was cleanup to get this done correctly, so nothing to add.
Commissioner Sassen?
Uh, yeah, just cleanup. Can you give, do you have any background on the family promise program? How long would people be staying there overnight, or how does that work?
It's, my understanding, the people don't actually stay there overnight, they go home with the family, like, different families of the church, and I, I think they transition from church to church, like, there's multiple ones that participate.
I believe that's right, yeah, I do know other churches participate, and they all share, I just didn't know what the impact with regard to residency at the church was.
Yeah, they shouldn't be staying overnight, but they do spend, like, their days, like, they spend the night, and then they come, and it's kind of, they give them access to computers, they let them have laundry facilities, and kind of hang out for the day, but they are teaching them interview skills, like, to get them jobs.
Right.
And kind of rehabilitate the families, so.
Thank you. And, and every now and then, we get a nice surprise in our backup packet from, from the staff, and it was interesting to see the nineteen oh one purchase deed.
Deed, yes.
By hand, with beautiful handwriting.
Yes.
Signed by Frank Brown himself.
Mm-hmm.
Selling this property for ten dollars, and other valuable consideration. It was, every now and then, you get a nice surprise. I was, I'm glad you added that to the packet, makes us read the whole thing to see if there's something cool in there.
I love seeing those little documents.
I have no other questions.
Okay. Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Conrad?
I don't have anything to.
Okay. Nothing additional on my end either. Is there, or, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? No, no opposed? Okay, our next action item is to consider approving a site plan for Big City Manufacturing to be located at forty-four seventy-two FM twenty-three fifty-one, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. The public hearing to receive comments both oral and written regarding this request for a site plan approval is now open. Um, there's no public?
It's not a zone change.
Okay. Okay. The commission now consider making a recommendation on the requested specific use permit. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Did I miss something?
I'll give a explanation.
Okay.
So, this is just a, this is a site plan approval for Big City Manufacturing, this is gonna be located at forty-four seventy-two FM twenty-three fifty-one, so this is part of the Industry Park One development. So, if you're going towards forty-five, not the street that goes into Timber Creek Golf Course, but the one right after that, you turn into that private drive, and then there's a cul-de-sac street in there with, I think, six or eight lots, and this is one of those lots. So, it's a twenty-three thousand square foot, just industrial building. Access to the property, they are gonna have large trucks accessing the property, so they'll drive in from the private drive and then out the back. There is a street back there that the city uses to access their water plant, but it was built sufficient enough to handle the truck traffic, and they are gonna widen the turning radius for those trucks to be able to leave that site and not tear up, you know, property. So, um, these are some local Friendswood residents that are relocating their business from Houston to Friendswood, so it's always good to have the live here, work here.
Okay. Now, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. We'll start discussion with Commissioner Sassen.
Does the owner, is, is the owner representative?
I'm the general contractor.
Is there anything you want to say in advance of us speaking about this? Anything to add to what you've already put out? Tell your name and such.
I'm Trevor Robinson, with Northwoods Construction. We've done the other two buildings in that same development, the Industry Park Phase One. And yeah, they're just a, a family-owned business, about forty years. The two brothers that run it, they do live here in Friendswood, and they're happy to move their, their business from Hobby up to, from Hobby Airport area, back in Friendswood, so they're real excited, I think it's gonna be a very nice building, and we're looking forward to it. So, any questions? Feel, feel free to ask.
You want to stay close, I suspect there'll be some questions for you.
Okay.
Perfect, so.
Yeah, that'll work. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Sassen?
So, first question? That's how I predicted.
Yeah.
So, how long have you been in business in Houston? And when, what is the nature of your business?
So, uh, uh, Big City Manufacturing, what they do is, they manufacture tags for, for, could be for equipment, like, uh, you know, machinery, that sort of thing, I think they have done some other work for, just all sorts of tags, like trophy tags, that sort of thing.
Uh-huh.
They've been in business, I believe, forty years. I think they're, I think it may be fourth generation at this point.
Wow.
I think that's the case.
Okay.
But yeah, so that's, that's what they do there.
It's, it's great to see you coming here, not associated with approving this or disapproving it. Why did you choose Friendswood?
Uh, well, I'm just the general contractor.
Well, why did they choose, you have any feel?
Uh, I think because they live here. I, I believe that's why.
Okay.
So, I think they, if I'm not mistaken, I think they live over, right down twenty-three fifty-one, I believe.
Okay.
So, they're very close, so.
I've gotten feedback from staff that this was the best package they've ever seen, the first time, they didn't have all sorts of red marks and blue marks going back, and so, I was very pleased by that, it's nice to see a very professional-looking package come, come forward the first time. I think I'm probably stealing some of their thunder on that, but I appreciate the, the good work.
Well, wonderful, we'll make sure our design team knows that.
How many trucks a day do you expect to have going through?
I believe they said they could expect around three trucks a day.
Okay.
I, I believe that came up in conversation when we were designing the, the layout of the, of the, of the site plan.
Okay, thank you. There are, are there any old oil wells, this was an old oil field?
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any, any oil, oil wells under your property itself that had been abandoned or P and A, plugged and abandoned?
That site plan, I may have to go.
I didn't see any on the site plan, but that doesn't mean they weren't there.
On that specific site.
On the lot that you're building on, right.
There is no abandoned.
That's the only thing you have control over, is your lot.
I'd have to confirm with the engineer.
Okay.
On the other project, we did have an oil well that we had to address.
Okay, but here, there's no issue.
That is correct.
Okay, that's great. That's all I have, thank you.
Wonderful. Anything else?
Commissioner Bounce?
I think Richard needs to be our spokesman all the time. I, I.
I talked to him.
Commissioner Mann?
And Aubrey answered my question, which was gonna be road infrastructure for the trucks, so that's good for me, that's all I had, thanks.
Commissioner Conrad?
Very excited to get some work back in Friendswood.
Oh, yeah, I think they have about thirty-five to forty employees, so I think I would have heard, so very excited for it.
Well, so, like Commissioner Sassen said, I mean, the package is real nice, well put together, like that, and we are bringing business to Friendswood, which, especially good to see a Friendswood resident bringing their own business back, so I would have no objection, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. You all have a good day.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, the next action item is to consider approving the preliminary plat of Nixon Estates located on Lundie Lane, being the west two hundred and seventy feet of lot four of Van Pelt Subdivision, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Uh, yes, this is a single-family residential lot, it's just one individual lot, they didn't meet the exemption requirement, or exemption, exemption requirements to be able to not plat in order to get a building permit. They had to dedicate some right-of-way, or easement to the drainage district along the rear of the property, and then we needed ten feet of right-of-way along the front, and they're bigger than five acres, so this is the preliminary plat, and then you'll see it one more time, and then they'll be able to get building permits.
Okay. And being there's nobody from the public.
You left.
We'll go on to the, uh, the commission now will consider making a recommendation on the requested zone classification change. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Bounce? Second?
Second.
Okay.
Just for clarification, we're approving the preliminary plat, right?
Uh, sorry, yes, I did say that incorrectly, sorry. The commission now will consider making a recommendation on the requested plat change. A preliminary plat. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a, um, so we'll start discussion with Commissioner Bounce.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Commissioner Mann?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Sassen?
No, just to clean up, it happens to be five point oh four instead of four point nine nine acres, so, yeah.
And the only clarification I would say is that, while it does say estates, this is not like a big development, this is just for a residential piece of land, so. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, next from our, next on our agenda is communications, and we'll start with, the first thing, Aubrey, do you want to announce the next meetings?
Yes, our next regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be Thursday, April twenty-seventh, and then the first meeting in May would be Thursday, May eleventh.
Do you have activities for those? You're pretty sure you're gonna have those, or is it unsure at this point?
Um, I probably, I've got quite a few things.
Okay.
That are hopefully gonna come through.
We've had so many cancellations lately, it's been nice, we've been meeting once a month, we're getting spoiled.
Right. We, we'll see, we'll see if they get turned back in. Yeah, we do have a couple of site plans we're pushing for.
What I'm hearing you say is there's nothing on yet, but there's a lot of things imminent, and probably some of them will break.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Next, the twenty, March twenty-twenty-three DRC report?
Uh, yes, that was in your backup material. I guess that was in your backup material. If y'all have any questions on any of those, let me know. There was one typo that I forgot to correct before I posted the agenda, that eight-oh-one West Parkwood was listed as eight-ten West Parkwood on that, but that was the zone change that was before you tonight, so like I said, I put the wrong address on there, so I think that's the only correction on that.
Okay. Next, our great city council update from.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Trish. We've continued communications with comments from the commissioners, Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sassen?
I have nothing to share.
Commissioner Mann?
Nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Conrad?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Likewise, I have nothing to add, Aubrey?
I don't have anything.
Becky? Karen? Okay. With that, thank you everyone for attending this evening, and the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.